Two clocks, the one up there says we still have three minutes, but call the meeting to order. Start with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. Trying to make this as exciting and riveting as always for you all. Start out with our regular consent agenda items. We have approved regular meeting minutes of June 3rd and approved the special meeting minutes of June 10th.
Chairman, I'm so moved. My words weren't coming out today.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have action items, A, B, and C.
I'll make a motion to approve action items, A, B, and C. Vouchers for $14,123.22. Voucher item B, $20.22. Voucher item number C, $61.90.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Scott, would you like to start?
Sure. I've got to pull up here. Of course, I did the regular meeting on June 3rd, special meeting June 10th. Boy, my words aren't coming today. June 11th, we had the North Bay Historical Society meeting, New Oyster House. And June 12th through the 14th, the WPPA Financial Seminar, which was Washington Public Ports Association Seminar. That was really educational, you know, the cyber hack information was pretty amazing. Pretty scary. They brought in a speaker, her name was Helen Thayer, she was really awesome, she's inspirational. She was the first woman to get up to the North Pole, the medic. My medic, man, this is sad. Anyway, and then also June 21st, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization at the Jamestown Skollum Tribe, and we're officially transferred to Kitsap Transit as the administrative entity. And Jefferson County is our fiscal agent. And then, of course, the North Mason Community Voice, June 24th, and Lenny Griffin spoke and gave some really good information, good historical document presentation. So, thank you, Lenny, that was it.
So I attended the general meeting, the special meeting, and then, like Commissioner Scott said, it was, the finance meeting was outstanding. The first day was over my head, second day I started picking it up. But there's a lot to learn about ports. So, that was very, very educational, so that was about it.
I as well attended the regular board meeting, the special meeting. I came down and I met with the contractors regarding the emergency repair to our dock. And I attended the Economic Development Council meeting for the month. I was unable to attend the financial seminar, even though it is my favorite seminar to go to, but it was safety days that week, so. Two of the three days of the financial seminar was safety days, and safety days always wins out, so I did not miss a safety days for that. But, I think I said last meeting that every time I fill out a form at the end of a meeting, I say, "Let's have it at Alderbrook," and then they finally started having it at Alderbrook, and I can't make it, it's in my back door.
It was great, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Wonderful.
It's a great venue, and I actually saw Helen Thayer speak at the Sheriff's Breakfast one time.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, she's pretty awesome. Yeah.
Yeah, she crossed the Gobi Desert with her husband as well.
She did something big on her 80th birthday, but I don't know what it was.
If I could throw a plug for Helen, I've gotten to know her over the last 10 years, my family and I. She's an amazing lady. If you ever get a chance to read her book, her first book was called Polar Dreams, where she hiked up to the magnetic north pole by herself. And the Inuit tribe demanded that she took a dog, which lived by the name of Charlie. And that dog lived over 23 years. But if you want a fun book to read, read her books. On her 80th birthday, she was the first person to hike across the Death Valley by herself. By herself, this year she's doing it with one of her new dogs. And she is, she's a huge supporter of law enforcement and firefighters. And she's all about five foot one. Sir Edmund Hillary was her mentor when she grew up in New Zealand. And she is a spark plug, so. She would love, I asked her, I say, "Would you love to come speak to a port meeting?" And she said, "Yes, I would," so.
Awesome.
And maybe we could pack this room with hopefully younger people to get inspired. So she is an amazing, amazing person.
You bought all three of her books. I went to Gobi Desert one in one day, and I don't read books. It was great.
All right, well, moving on to security officer report.
Travis Miles, Department of Homeland Security. Got off vacation, finally back. But the nights have been fairly active again. Had to actually tell somebody to leave at North Shore last night about midnight. So that's kind of new. But it seems like we're going to have an issue with the dock still being closed off. I did catch some people out there jumping off it a couple of weeks back. With the warmer weather, it's hard to keep them from going down there. They just jumped the little gate fence that we got. So, and we've got the 4th of July coming up, and that's going to be pretty hectic with not having people going down there because it's still under repair.
Travis, do we have anybody at the marina on the North Shore? I was there launching a boat yesterday, I didn't see any vessels there at all.
At the actual, the pay pier?
Yes.
Yeah, we actually have one that's, that paid Sunday night for seven days throughout the week. And then there was one there last night as well that did not pay that I documented. I've got a few tickets I need to drop off at the office every time I drove by, nobody was in this week, so.
My family and I launched our boat yesterday, which was, it was a busy day.
Sure.
I watched four people launch their boats without paying.
Yeah.
One person recognized me.
Sure.
And luckily, the person that didn't pay got his truck stuck on a log.
Yeah.
And she said karma's, you know where. So, we need to give some, use some tools.
Well, what we need is the camera. That camera needs to be real. We've been playing the fake for so long, everybody knows it's not real. If we have a camera that I can check it when it activates, then I can log every license plate. And if there isn't proof of payment, then we can send them a bill. The other thing is, is not being, having any criminalized rules, it's the hardest thing to enforce.
We'll get through that on the agenda. I've been going about this a lot of different ways. I've been on the board now for a year and a half, and I said we'd get this done.
Right, oh yeah.
I think we got a way to get it done. You're the only port security officer in Mason County.
Yeah.
And so, I'm really not too excited about having you enforce criminalized rules for all the ports. And I'll talk to the executive director, but I think we got a way to recoup some of that money when you're available.
Sure. It's a matter of being able to actually get people to recognize that there are consequences for not paying the bill. And that's our biggest unwavering.
And do we have, the Oyster Company, do they pay annual launch fees?
Yes, they do. They pay a commercial launch fee.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's a few others that pay, and there's a lot of them that actually pay the $75 for the year passed. And, and if you're not seeing them pay, they might have a placard.
No, they were throwing up their discovery pass on their.
Sometimes, but a lot of them think that that works.
Correct.
And the only time I can actually catch them is if I drive down there at a time where they're parked there. And parked after using the boat launch.
Right.
And then I can actually document them if they've paid or not. But when I drive down there, sometimes they're just not there.
I was checking, so. Yeah, they were putting up their discovery passes and.
And maybe another quick note is a big sign saying discovery passes are not valid for use of the boat launch. Because, you know, a lot of them wouldn't then recognize that, because some of them don't.
So, July 3rd, Alderbrook has their fireworks. I'm sure our boat launch is going to get hit.
Sure.
A lot, so. That's why I was wondering if anybody was mooring down there.
Yeah, there's, there's one that actually paid on Sunday night for an entire week.
Okay.
And then there was another one there that was there and had not paid. And we just got a ticket, and I'll be checking tonight to see if he's paid or not, so.
All right.
Go from there.
Travis, I was down here on Saturday evening. What time did you leave? I just missed it. So I was probably here at 5:30 or so. There was a wedding, so they blocked off, is that something we do, is block off the parking so only wedding on that side?
That's something they did. I noticed there was some cones that were stacked up.
And I had to park, if I had a trailer, I had to park over there. And there was somebody fishing at the end of the damaged part of the pier. There was a boat tied up to it, and there was, there was other people down past our.
Right, and then occasionally boats will come in during the weekend especially and just tie up to the damaged part of the pier because they just either don't care, or, we don't have any real notices down there either, that for boaters, there was they come in saying, "The pier is closed, it's damaged." We just have it blocked off up here at the top.
Right, yeah, that's true.
So.
You know, we should have something. That was it, I just wanted to mention that it was kind of chaotic down here. There was people parked in front of the bathrooms, and I had to back in there, and I think I probably irritated the owners down there because somebody had to come in.
And that's might be something that we should have on the rental contract that specifically states that they can't block the park off to other parkgoers. You know, I mean, when you get a large wedding venue and a party, they might just start doing whatever they feel like, because they feel like they own the place to rent it.
I didn't mean to bombard you, but thank you very much.
Oh, no, please.
I know.
Bombarding is the only way things are going to get done.
Summers are bigger out here.
Yes, they are. That's where we have everything, because it's the big influx of people around here. And our facilities actually get used then. It's the winters that, pretty much nothing goes on during the winter.
I gotta, I gotta see all of Don's anti-theft devices in the restroom, because I needed to use the restroom. Toilet paper holder chained to the wall.
Oh, yeah, it's pretty serious.
Thanks, Travis.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, executive director's report.
All right. Appointment of an auditor. At the recent WPPA Financial Seminar, it was outlined as best practice that the port designate by name an official auditor. This must be done annually via resolution, so there is a resolution on the agenda to approve this. The auditor evaluates both audit and business risks to the port and reports to the commission. I've suggested that Leanne do that person, since she works as the state auditor and handles the majority of our bookkeeping work. In my opinion, she is the best person to handle this very important task, unless, of course, one of you want to take it on. Financial reports, beginning this month, you will be receiving financial reports as part of your regular meeting packets. We're finally comfortable enough using bias to be able to generate these reports with confidence that they are accurate. Water system issues. Not heard anything recently concerning the 15 water availability letters issued to Seadrill and Holmes, except they did have us fill out a form confirming availability for a permit that they pulled. Joe Seadrill told me last month, "We're moving forward, have two sets of house plans being designed. We'll have four models totally and hopefully start construction this summer." He also said they've purchased a seven acre parcel in front of Haven and Allen, will be developing that as well. I expect I should hear back from him in the next few weeks. Haven and Allen has also purchased the property on Wheelright, one parcel north of Lakeland Drive. They're developing a memory care facility there. I had some discussions with Robert Baglio of the BJC Group earlier this year about water hookup fees for that project, but at the time, he wasn't sure if he would be the general contractor or not. Pat McCullough is the engineer on that project, and he stopped by last week to look at as-built drawings for where the water lines are and confirm that BJC is the builder. The Eric Community Utilities Proposal, nothing really new on this. As we have discussed previously, we've had some informal discussion with the Eric Community Utilities to purchase their water system, which is adjacent to ours. After discussing this with Mr. Carey, we decided the best path forward is to have the system appraised. However, finding somebody who actually does these kinds of appraisals have been problematic at best. I contacted PUD Number One, they referred me to Evergreen Rural Water, which we're members. The executive director said she would look into it and report back, but as of yet, and several phone calls, I haven't heard anything. Spoke with Mr. Carey today, and he brought up some good points we'll need to explore. Among those, there is state money available for larger systems acquiring systems like his, but how does the state agency determine the value? We're going to look into that, and he and I will chat again this week and regroup about it. Property purchase, I've been told by Kim Sellers, our CO grant manager, that after the projects have been ranked, we scored number 10 out of the 18 applications they received. Excuse me. And our request for the property purchase and staging area project is about 99% sure to be funded at 100%. Our CO met on June 26th and 27th to make the final decisions on allocations. However, the money won't be available until August. While we received the property appraisal back, and it isn't anywhere near where the sellers told me their bottom line prices, I did some calculations on their net revenue after cost of sale and selling it to us in an eminent domain situation. Without the unknown cost of any repairs, they would be required to make selling to a private party. So now we have to enter into negotiations with seller and see where it goes. I had some discussion with the sellers, and I'm convinced we can make this work one way or another. Dock issues. As you know, we had hit a dead end with Endurus and engaged Foster Pepper to deal with them. And the rest of my report is one way here, so let me pull up the original. What happened there? I've had computer problems all day, and all day Saturday.
You weren't ready to reply to that?
No, I got it. On Friday, we received an email from our attorney saying Endurus has made us an offer of $19,855, minus our $1,000 deductible, along with their rationale for that number. I've enclosed a copy of the email from the attorney in your meeting packets along with my response and a copy of Endurus' letter to our attorney explaining their rationale for that number, which is basically that the $19,855 offer was what Tim Zach did the job for. In fact, he couldn't do the job in a timely manner, in spite of us offering him a $10,000 premium to do the job when we needed it, is why we hired Marine Floats, who could. That offer is approximately one-half of what is needed to repair the southern section of the dock. We also have approximately $6,000 in attorney's fees, which would be one-third of that settlement. So when all is said and done, we would net approximately $12,800. We originally asked for the entire cost of the dock repair, $37,768, plus the cost of new floats for half of the center section, a little over $9,000. What I personally feel would be a fair and equitable settlement would be for Endurus to pay to replace the entire southern section of the dock. We would absorb the cost of replacing the damaged floats in the center section, which is over $9,000. We will waive any claims for lost revenue for the period. This matter's been in dispute, which is six months now. Endurus agrees to pay half our attorney's fees, which we wouldn't have incurred had they stepped up and done the right thing from the beginning. And we agree not to file any complaints with the Office of the Insurance Commissioner or make any other reports aware of such action. However, in talking to the attorney today, she feels we could probably get another $10,000 out of Endurus, but she didn't feel we'd be able to get the entire cost of replacing the southern section. So what I'm recommending we actually do is counter Endurus' offer with asking for the full amount of the replacement and waive the other costs other than half the attorney's fees. This is on your agenda for discussion and a decision which, of course, in which course of action you want to pursue. Meanwhile, our attorney, is Foster Pepper, have merged with another large Seattle law firm, Garvey Schubert Behr. The new firm is named Foster Garvey. All the folks we work with are staying, and Steve DiGiulio has become the managing partner.
Joe Stein?
Yeah.
Joe Stein?
Yeah, no, he's, yeah, Joe Stein. Since you all approved authorizing me to negotiate and deal with Marine Floats to build the new dock, the special meeting on June 10th, I sent them the contract, and they believe they can get it, if they can get it permitted, they can get it done and in place by July 19th, the start of Allen Days. Marine Floats is asking for an emergency permit. Commissioner Netherlands said he would work to try and help expedite that. I had a couple of discussions with Chris Nelson at the county, and he said that Fish and Wildlife has to sign off on the permit, but it looks like they're going to agree to handle this as an emergency permit. Someone from Fish and Wildlife was supposed to come out and expect it to approve the emergency permit, but so far, we haven't seen anyone. I also reached out to our legislators, asking them to help us make sure that happens. The last thing we need is for this project to be finished off-site and not be able to install it due to lack of a permit. Lobbying contract, Josh sent me a new contract, which I assigned and returned. It's cancelable with a 30-day written notice with a copy in your meeting packets. Also, instead of the escalated rate this year and again next year, they averaged the cost on the balance on the three-year agreement into one monthly cost that stays the same for the rest of the agreement at $23.78 a month. It was scheduled to be $2,500 for 2020 and $3,000 for 2021. We did add the last quarter of 2021 to the agreement, as it was scheduled to expire in September. This helped lower the monthly cost, and will help us get our 2022 ask figured out and in process before the legislative session begins. Security issues. I haven't had much time to research security systems since the last meeting, but I've done some preliminary research online, looking into the costs of what it'll take to install some kind of high-resolution wireless remote camera system here at the park, as well as at the Vidcanal Boat Launch and Marina. There are systems available that are transmitting images to cell phones from multiple cameras in multiple locations and store them for downloading if necessary for law enforcement documentation. I'm hoping to be able to set up about a half a dozen cameras for under $1,000. More on this as I learn more. There is a place in Tukwila called 257 Security that I'd like to go visit as they appear to be the largest security equipment provider in this area. Hopefully, I'll be able to do that, if not this week, sometime next week. I also asked Don to install Sharps containers in all the restrooms here and at the kayak park, which he has now done. I believe we need to take steps to attempt to protect both our staff from harm as well as the general public. We've restricted the hours the restrooms are open in an attempt to minimize all this, but it's still a real problem. 3D building acquisition, nothing to report. However, I have reached out to our legislators again last week about this and asked them to see if they can help us acquire this in an intergovernmental transfer. WPPA meeting schedules. Next up is the Executive Director's Seminar, July 11th to 12th at Scamania Lodge. Then the annual Commissioner Seminar, July 22nd to 24th at Suncadia. The environmental seminar, September 26th and 27th at Campbell's Lodge in Chalina. We've made reservations for everyone for the Commissioner Seminar and the environmental seminar, so we can get the rooms reserved. We can always cancel if someone can't make it, but if we do reservations late, as we found at the annual meeting in Suncadia last year, we may end up paying much more than necessary if we don't. Retreat, we had previously discussed doing a retreat after the small ports meeting in October. Leanne is checking into getting a small meeting room to do this. We will need to discuss future projects and update our comprehensive scheme, but I'd like to know if any of you have specific subjects you'd like to discuss so we can develop an agenda. Vacation, I will be taking vacation time from August 13th through the 21st. Bryce and I are doing another baseball trip, only this time to the East Coast. Totem pole issue, nothing to report. Old business. Transient mortgage expansion project, can't move forward on this until the dock is repaired. Marine Floats is building the new floats, and will have them in place hopefully by Allen Days. In talking with Marine Floats, we can pre-wire and pre-plumb the sections of the new dock and put the pedestals in place while the new floats are being fitted into place. Also ordered the pay station for the boat launch as well, but it's still several weeks out for delivery. Sweetwater Park, nothing to report on this, other than we figured out that we sent the signed paperwork to RCO. They're supposed to get a deed issued for us. I emailed Kim Sellers at RCO, she said we should have had it by now, that she would look into it. She researched it, and it appears it may not have yet been processed, but Kim told me she's on it. Oyster House, I met with Bonnie Knight to set up a schedule of tasks to be performed on stabilization and using the drawings Mike Ross did. Since Mike drawing, Mike's drawings are not stamped by an engineer, I also forwarded them to Art Anderson Associates, asked them to review them and make any changes that we'll need so we can get them stamped and get this out of it ASAP. Criminalization of Marina rules, nothing that's happened on this. However, after the all-ports meeting, I think if we press this issue in conjunction with the other ports, we may get somewhere, but I believe Commissioner Jackson has some additional information on this as well, because I know he's been working on it. The all-ports meeting, the Kitsap all-ports meeting, the next one, July 10th. That's my.
Old business.
Have you heard anything from Art Anderson at all?
Uh, no. And I called him today, but the guy that is working on it wasn't there today. But I did follow up with a phone call, just tried to follow all that stuff up before the meeting, so.
Anything for old business?
I just read it up.
Anything for new business?
You have something I want us to think about. As you know, I'm on the search committee for the Washington Public Ports Association. Executive Director, and they've hired a search consultant. And, but they want to, I'm going to have a phone interview about what do we want as a small port and an executive director?
Who's the search firm?
Charis Consulting.
Oh, yeah, okay. They just got the new executive director for BIW.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
Okay.
And he is an ace.
Cool. Well, anyway, so be thinking about it, maybe by the end of the night, I can have a few, few items that you guys would like to see so I can report back to them.
Well, I think we need to have somebody that understands the difference between the Port of Seattle and the Port of Allen.
Yes.
And what our needs are.
So what are some of our needs?
Medical benefits.
Okay.
Small groups, I mean, Eric wouldn't even consider it, because it was too much time for his staff to work.
Okay.
I read that.
Some of the stuff, and we go back to the criminalization of Marina rules. It'd be nice to have a advocate down in Olympia that we can do something with. We're not fighting with the Mason County Commissioners, the sheriff, the prosecutor to get these things done. I think we're in a unique position in Mason County. As I said earlier, Travis is the only security person around for all the ports in Mason County. And we've talked about, can I jump back and forth between?
Please.
So, what I was looking at is that we make our Marina rules civil. If we were to do criminalization of Marina rules, Travis has the authority to issue those criminal citations. We'd have to print up our criminal citations, so we'd have to print up boxes of citations for Travis to issue. If we were to do, and then we'd have to go through the prosecutor's office and, I mean, crying out loud, I know they won't run with them. If we were to do a civil infraction, like a speeding ticket, or a, if you run a red light camera, goes to, Travis would issue that infraction, and then we have a collection agency pick it up. So, that's where I'm leaning towards, but there's other criminal fines that occur at our port. I mean, criminal.
Criminal.
Criminal things that the county is not picking up, and the sheriff has made it clear.
I know, if I call the sheriff, they're not going to get there in any amount of time. I just get to tell them to go, get out of here.
Correct.
Leave, don't come back. I've gone through the process and tried to give them a trespass.
You know, Travis, I could tell you as a 30-year law enforcement, trespass is a joke.
Yes, it is.
Prosecutors, I dealt with four counties, they don't want to deal with it. So, what I'm thinking is that, as a Port of Allen, we make these civil infractions. If you don't pay your launch fees, and we have some system where Travis is there on hand to say, "Okay, this person just launched her boat and didn't pay." You can just put a written warning on there, and if it doesn't go to a written warning, I mean, if they don't. don't pay up after the written warning, then it goes to a collection. But as a port, we have to set up a collection agency, and then we have to print up the infractions themselves. And fractions themselves are not cheap to print, or criminal citations are not print. I'm working it through, I'm trying to give Travis a tool where he can actually do something. Hang some piece of paper, it's no fun to hang paper on cars, but especially when people...
That fine way is trustworthy.
Well, I used to tell my officers.
Which electric's here for?
Print and go, run, so, because all you're gonna do is get in an argument. But, we're trying to work it out. We're getting absolutely no support from the sheriff, and he keeps on saying that he doesn't have the staff, which, yes or no, but part of his job, part of the sheriff's office job is to run through all commercial operations, but I want to give Travis a tool where if he sees a violation, he can deal with it. Not the criminal stuff, that's supposed to be the sheriff's job, so. I'm working, I think we got it. As a port commit, as a port, we can issue civil penalties.
It's like a parking ticket.
It's an agreement that you use our facility, you're not doing, you're not paying for our facility, so now we're gonna go after you civilly through a collection agency to collect the seven dollars or five dollars that you didn't pay, which is gonna turn out to fifteen dollars or twenty-five dollars after the civil tax gets through.
What would that really?
Yeah, it is.
It should be.
A seven dollar fine should be a hundred fifty dollar fine if it takes everybody's time.
Well, absolutely, that's where, as a port, as a port, we recoup the money.
Yeah, because we're gonna have to give fifty percent to a collection agency.
Exactly. And then it's gonna cost us, like I said, to print up a couple of books, which we're gonna have to print up more than a couple, probably gonna have to print up five hundred, five hundred books in bulk. It's gonna, that's gonna cost us a couple thousand dollars, so.
Even the little crappy little ticket books that I have, just asking them to pay us basically, those things cost them about three or four hundred dollars.
Yeah, they were like four hundred.
Do they ever pay?
Well, sometimes they really do.
Yeah, sometimes.
But all we can do is send them a letter in the mail saying, please pay us.
Yeah, which, there's a cost to that.
Some will pay and some will not.
Right. So that's where, and unless we have, unless you're there on hand to watch who launched the boat, all you're getting is license plates or WN numbers. And, so then you just attack it to that vehicle or to that boat.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not gonna go on your insurance, it's not gonna go on anything else, just pay the fine. Otherwise, you're just gonna have that civil penalty riding over your head, so. I think if we go criminalization of Marina rules, we're gonna have a huge problem, because you're it. If we had a whole series of port security officers throughout the county.
Because when you criminal, when you give criminalization rules of a port, it's also not just the Port of Allen, it's the Port of Breakthrough, it's every port in the county.
Right.
So, meaning for Shell.
Right. So, if the commissioners and the executive director, I'm still working it through, I need the language to make sure we have the authority to issue civil infractions, which I know we do, I just gotta get that language pulled up. And then I'll, I'll get the cost of the books, and then we gotta research what collection agency we wanna use. You could hang paper, get out, whatever we get, we get back, otherwise it's on the board's, it's on the board's credit history, well, it's not even on that, it's on, so.
Sure. I've got a few other ideas to discuss.
Yeah, I'd love to, yeah.
Do you record at the county, do you record those infractions with the county? Is that part of it?
You, when you write a traffic infraction, they're recorded with the county.
Okay.
But I'm writing it to that person.
Okay.
If I write, like a discovery pass ticket, when I was with Fish and Wildlife, I wrote it to that vehicle. I didn't know who drove that vehicle in, could've been a son or daughter, could've been a neighbor borrowing that discovery pass, I wrote it to that vehicle. That went to the collection agencies, the discovering pass tickets, so. Unless I had somebody that came into a Fish and Wildlife access or State Park access, and I got them out of the vehicle and wrote it to their driver's license, it went to the vehicle or to the boat, so. And that's the same thing with the red light cameras and everything, it just goes to the vehicle, so. It's, we got into a little bailiwick here that we need to figure out a way out, so.
The camera's gonna be the big one because it just gives us recorded evidence and stuff that's being seen right out there. Because if we have that, then we can kind of head off some of the stuff. We've got video evidence there.
There was, there was people, it was very busy on Sun, uh, let's say, Sunday, in our lot on the North Shore, and there was people there working on their cars, in the main lot, and people were trying to get through and get out, and lot, or, you know, people parking across the street, which that lot looks great across the street.
Yeah.
But you had to have peer pressure to move them on, okay, we're working on your car, we've got boats trying to get in and get out, so. I'm done with my soapbox, apologize.
No, that's great, we need to hear that, we need to get some better understanding. Please. Sorry, Chairman.
Can you come up here?
I'm sorry.
We got, we got the...
I'm Bonnie Knight, from Allen. I was just gonna say, when Pat Jones was the director, what's the kid's name now?
Eric.
Eric. He basically worked with the small ports, and he really understood them, and we didn't get lost in the shuffle, and if anything, I would make a recommendation to them that they do have a direct contact other than the director, because they get overwhelmed with the big ports. And they, I mean, they got a lot of stuff done, they're the one, he's the one that helped us protect the lease out here, helped us work through that, and they actually got legislation changed for us, so that would be my input on that, as if they'll do it.
It'd be very helpful. So making sure that they work with a liaison, again, I think like what he said, having us, having them know the difference between the small ports and the big ports.
Yes.
Yeah.
He was our point of contact.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to new business. Discussion of Endura's settlement offer, action to accept, reject, or counter. So, I personally would like to study this a little longer, and I don't think I'm prepared to make my own decision on whether we accept, reject, or counter. And I think the counter sounds good, but to get it all in front of me and kind of see everything, I don't know if we need to have a special meeting for that, or if you guys are ready to make a decision.
I mean, the lawyers are expecting us to make some kind of decision, they want some direction about what to do.
What was their recommendation again? Because I just don't wanna, you know...
They think they can get, excuse me, they think they can get another ten thousand dollars out of Endura's, but they don't think they'll get a lot more.
The email recommendation was to accept their offer, that today you got that other.
Okay.
So their first recommendation via email was to accept the nineteen thousand.
I wrote her this big long message on Saturday, and she said, well, you brought up some points I hadn't really thought of.
Well, I, I'm just gonna throw this out, because I know that if we want to get this done, we gotta get it started. I don't know if you want to do a special meeting, I think it should be soon if we are for a decision, but I would go with what the lawyer says, but I don't wanna, you know, Endura says the power to say yea or nay, and I don't want to get them too ticked off either to say no. I think we have some valid reasons why we need to go for more, so, I think...
I obviously do.
Well, of course, and that's good, that's, your job is to protect us.
I feel very strongly about this, you know, they have jerked us around for six months. And, you know, we're losing money every day that the dock is closed.
Absolutely.
And they feel like, well, that's not their problem. I feel like, yeah, it is, you know, that you caused the problem, so, but I'm not talking to Endura's, that's the attorney's job. But she, she feels that, you know, we have some vulnerability over a couple of maintenance issues, but...
Diver's report.
Yeah, and that's exactly what it is. So, you know, I, what I had thought was, we counter back with the full price of the Southern section repair, and see what Endura says, and, you know, what's the worst they're gonna do, say no?
Hold the other money?
Yeah.
I agree with your option, the option two.
Okay.
And I think there, there should be some more money associated with the dock repair, so. Option one just seemed, we'll take care of you guys, go away, but I agree with option two, that we need to explore getting more money out of them for that damage.
Yeah.
So, for today's decision, we have accept the offer that Endura's has given us, we have Mary's counter offer, we have a special meeting to study it, and we'll bond from there.
You know, if you want to do that, I mean, we can get the attorney on the phone, so you all can hear what she has to say.
Yeah, I personally would like that, because something's changed from earlier today to this evening, and, I mean...
Totally.
Okay. Oh, is that what that is?
Which is a dog, it's her dog.
We could do it in, in a week.
Okay.
I don't know what your guys' schedule is, but...
Well, I could probably do it.
We got fourth of July coming up, but...
Yeah.
How about next Monday, what's that like?
I will tentatively say yes.
Yeah, I would say yes right now.
Could you, that would be the eighth?
Oh, I have a meeting that night.
Well, talking about doing a...
During the day? During the day I can.
Because business hours for the attorney?
It's at six.
We got business hours for the attorney.
Okay.
So maybe do like a lunch meeting like we do last week.
Do a lunch meeting? I could do that.
Okay, so new and on the eighth?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and... Do we have the resolution in here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I will let her know, and that what we want is for her to call along, so we can, you all can hear what she has to say.
Okay.
So we're going to table, table item A till our meeting on Monday.
Okay.
Designate an official auditor, action to approve resolution four oh one. WPPA believes that this is a best practice, I believe it's a best practice as well, I have no desire to be the port's auditor, do you, Commissioner Scott?
Oh, no. I would be, I would accept that.
And I would entertain a motion to...
It would be inappropriate for me to be.
Chairman, I move that we accept resolution four oh one, which is the resolution of the Port of Allen Commission on the subject of appointing an auditor. I will read there for, whereas it's recommended as best practice, Port of Allen appoint an official auditor via resolution on an annual basis, this appointment should coincide with the adoption of the annual budget. Whereas since the port is more than halfway through its nineteen, twenty nineteen fiscal year, this appointment shall be in effect until December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. The two thousand twenty appointment will be made on the same time the two thousand twenty annual budget is adopted. Therefore, let be it revolve, resolved, that the Board of Commissioners, after duly considering all relevant evidence, has elected to appoint Mrs. Leanne Dennis as the port's auditor for the balance of two thousand nineteen. That appointment may be extended through the year two thousand twenty as being incorporated into the resolution. Commission adopts to approve the two thousand twenty annual budget.
Paul Second.
A motion and a second to approve resolution number four oh one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Item C, discussion of levy increase.
Um, you know, we've kind of talked about this off and on for, you know, the five years that I've been here, you know. I just kind of wanted to open the dialogue about how you all feel about it.
Didn't you do a, kind of a sliding scale of what we'd be at?
Yes, I did.
And we're at fourteen cents.
We're at eighteen cents.
Eighteen cents per thousand, but the ability to go up to forty-five cents per thousand, the increase from eighteen to forty-five is not large.
No. You know, our, our net revenue isn't all that large, we go from about two hundred and fifty thousand to about four hundred thousand. And now as real estate values increase...
That goes down.
Yeah, yeah. Our, our net would increase, but, you know, what I wanted to know was basically, do you want to look into doing this and move forward, because it's something we're gonna have to sell to the community?
Sure.
But we need to be able to say, here's what we're gonna do with this money, and here's why we need it, and we need to make acceptable arguments, because we're asking people to tax themselves.
Well, I'm thinking we need to do our retreat and let's come up with a plan, but again, in my mind, we need a good project, you know, to warrant this kind of, if we do.
On the outside, I'm opposed to any tax increase unless we have a good project to, that, you know, the community to buy into. Lots of community input, lots of...
Right, I, there's gotta be a ton of community process.
It's a tough, it's a tough, it's a tough sell for anybody, but I think ports have a tougher sell.
Well, you know, the Port of Duwato has a higher tax rate than...
They do, yeah.
Really?
But a much lower assessment.
What is theirs? Well, yeah, that's true, because water, land, we have to...
Um, the other thing I thought about with this was, if we, it's tied to this, actually, has to do with our lobbyists, and I think that what I'd like to bring up at the next WPPA meeting, and I'm gonna do this at the Executive Director's Seminar, is the idea that we're limited to two IDDs in the entire, you know, this port's gonna be a hundred years old, and in a hundred years, they could do two IDDs, that...
No more after that.
Yeah, you know, that what we try to do is get, get the law changed that would let us do, you know, more IDDs, but you couldn't have any two of them building on at once, that you'd have to, you know, pay off one before you could do another. And I want to see how that resonates with the other executive directors and, you know, our new port executive director.
Executive director.
But I wanted to just see what you all thought about that.
Well, now that we're getting ancient...
Because if we could do that, we wouldn't need a levy increase particularly.
Well, the good thing is with the law change now, too, is that we don't have to go through the whole, I mean, we don't have to ask for the whole money.
Yeah, we have twenty years, yeah, we have twenty years to pay it on.
Yeah.
I agree with having a discussion at the retreat, but I, the only way I would do a levy increase, if we could document increased jobs in North Mason County.
Good point, that's right.
I, I really think we need to get back to our, or part of our core values in creating jobs up here, so economic development. So if we could document that we're creating jobs and do a levy increase by purchasing the property and bringing a business in, or bringing a couple businesses in, or developing our own business, I'd be more than happy to run with that, so. But I think we need to start having that discussion, so.
I agree. Okay. Okay.
Next item is potential discussion of additional items.
I didn't know if you, if anybody had anything else they wanted to talk about.
Do you have anything more about what you wanna see in executive director?
Oh, I, you know, I, I think I'll just agree with what's already been said is there's the Port of Seattle, there's the Port of Tacoma, and then there's the, uh, Port of Duwato and the Port of Allen. We're small, you know, we still believe we need to be represented in that office. And I think Eric did a good job. I mean, I, I think that's a, that's big shoes to fill and...
Well, you know, the committees that I serve on are economic development, uh, legislative and marine. And the Port of Seattle and the Port of Tacoma, and to some extent the Port of Vancouver drive economic development and, uh, legislative. And what we hear, like in the legislative committee, is how everything is tied to climate change. No matter what we're discussing here, there's some climate change hook to it. And that's, that's those guys driving that.
How about if I put here, take time to visit us?
Yeah.
Recognize that we are rural and usually conservative. Cause that's one thing that I don't know if, you know, necessarily...
You know, Mason County is the only county that touches Puget Sound if it were for Trump.
Well...
I don't know that.
For what that's worth.
Anything else that you can think of that pinpoints, you know?
Just what small ports are sometimes all about, regulation and...
Yeah.
You know, what, what does each, each port is unique and what its mission is is unique and what it does is unique. We need them to recognize that that's part of who we are. And I think for the most part, the Port of Seattle and the Port of Tacoma and the Port of Vancouver, they, they drive the agenda. And that's not necessarily our best interest.
Another thing that maybe we could tell them is that we need avenues, I mean, we already have RCO and CURB grants, but, you know, make sure that they can champion our, what our needs are in regards to grants and loans and for economic development and tourism.
Yeah, and the whole big thing that they got through the last session in legislature was about broadband.
Yeah.
That doesn't do a thing for us.
Okay. Anything else?
We need them to, we need them to, you know, take the initiative to represent things smaller ports need, you know? I mean, getting broadband authority was a good thing, don't get me wrong.
Right.
But we need things that will help us as well.
Okay. Anything else? All right.
So, we are done with new business items. We will open it up to public comment. Public?
Good evening. Michael Subtroth, I live at Trails End Lake. And I'm glad to see that there is some continuing effort around the Sweetwater Park. Sweetwater Creek Park is something I think will help to attract more visitors to our area, in turn spending more money, which will help the Belfair area, Belfair, uh, Allen area. And it will give, um, people more recreational opportunities to help their, uh, physical fitness and relaxation, which is needed as well. The other, um, thing that I'm particularly interested in is whether there's any, been many movement on the idea of the trail from Belfair State Park to the Department of Fish and Wildlife Property slash Salmon Center, which then links to Theller, which would link to this Sweetwater Park. So, um, I don't know if you're considering that, if you might bring it up at the retreat or sometime, but I think that would be a very complimentary part of this whole endeavor. And as, uh, Pat talked about when he proposed this, there are those people in the area, Lynch Cove, et cetera, who just have no way safely to get from North Shore to South Shore because there's no right of way, no margin of safety for people to cross the existing bridge across the Union River. Yeah, I mean, you're gonna take your life in your hands. And I have, there are students that I teach at, um, Sand Hill Elementary who would like to get over to Theller, the Salmon Center, but they can't do that unless their parents drive them and parents are working, so that's not likely to happen. So, they're cut off from one of the best assets that we have to offer. And I think that could be something that they could perhaps get, uh, their financial support behind because it will make a linkage which is gonna make our communities stronger. Uh, I have last year voluntarily set up a recycling and composting station for the Allen Days because my experience in the past was that there were only one, maybe two receptacles to accept recycling for Allen Days and there were no, not, there's nothing there to accept composting. And so, I set it up last year and this year I've reached out more to the Allen Community Association and they, they agreed that we should do that. Last year, just soliciting comments from people, they were like, oh yeah, we're used to this happening. Everything else, everywhere else we go, there's full recycling and there's composting available. So, there, the mindset is, yeah, why not? We do this already. And cutting down the amount of things that go into the landfill garbage stream instead of, uh, having that, which is more costly and then nothing's gonna come of it, but recycling, even though I know there are problems with it, it's an effort and we're trying to deal with how to, uh, make recycling more cost effective. Composting is a way of, again, assuring that part of what we produce in our world goes back into the positive part of regenerating soil instead of just becoming more of the landfill and garbage. I'm continuing to be available. I will take things home and recycle them and, um, the, the, uh, uh, Allen Community Association will be requesting more volunteer help, but I've already lined up a couple of people who will help me in this endeavor. And I think it's just a way of making Allen Days a little bit special and saying, hey, we're, we're in this together and our consciousness around the importance of taking care of our earth is highlighted, so that's what I plan on doing and I think it's gonna go well.
Mr. Subtroth, I've always, or for the last fifteen years, I've done the, uh, salmon, worked on the salmon crew. We're going through three hundred yard, uh, aluminum foil. And we're just throwing it in the same garbage can. And when you, we're speaking about that, how can we, we could separate it in a separate container. And I think everybody on that crew would be more than happy to do that. But how would you deal with it? Or how would somebody else do with that?
I think that's...
Excuse me?
Very difficult because in order to recycle aluminum foil, it has to be relatively clean.
Right.
So, uh, if you add that into other recycling, you're going to jeopardize the entire recycling being rejected and I don't want that to happen. So, I, I don't really see an easy way of recycling aluminum foil that's been contaminated with, um, an animal product that isn't easily washed. If it could be washed really easily and, uh, then it could be recycled, but I don't think that would happen.
I, I hear what you're saying, so I think the salmon crew just needs to dump, dump it in the same garbage can that we have been for years because it gets intermeagled with paper towels, latex gloves, and...
Yeah, yeah, it's a, that's a no salvageable...
Okay.
Item, unfortunately. Corn cob's, uh, the skins of the salmon, when people, you know, when we do that, we can compost those things, but, and, um, depending on the quality of the plate, you can compost the plates, which is beneficial. Napkins can be composted, uh, if they're not plasticized cups, they can be, uh, composted. Yeah, but boy, when you get into, uh, dirty foil, that's just not there. But all the bobbles, all the water bobbles and other things that people generate, all those are a hundred percent recyclable.
Thank you.
Can I add something?
Here.
Just, uh, a reminder to what you had said about the trail.
Yes.
That's in our comprehensive scheme.
To support that project.
Yeah.
I'm Bonnie Knight, North Bay Historic Society, Historical Society. I spent all afternoon with Ina in Tacoma at a mandatory contract meeting for the grant that we're getting. And it's a challenge, it's gonna be a real challenge. They think they could probably get it signed by the end of August if we have everything that, everything that they require. And it is really, expect more than any grant I've ever done. And one of the first things that we have to do is get in writing some kind of an agreement with the port for the North Bay Historic Society to run it down the line that we would be responsible for, you know, running the facility and whatever. They also require that nothing else happened with it for thirteen years. We have to make sure that that's, when you get a grant, that's the term of this grant. So, we have to have some kind of acknowledgement that, yeah, it's gonna be there for thirteen years. We have to have every single expenditure, every single receipt, copy of it, no matter how small, and we have a lot of small ones. It's gonna take a huge effort and I need Leanne to get whatever the port had, any receipts. We need copies from her on that. Yeah, it's, it's gonna be really a major challenge in the next two months to do. And Nicholas Van, he was there and he's one of the speakers and he wants to be involved in the actual contracting for the, for the business, for the work. And so, we need to arrange to have him review that and incorporate whatever they have to win it from the grant perspective. And that's not undoable, that's just another, just another step that we have to go through that we've never had to do before. They, of course, like any other grant, any other budget, they look at it a totally different way than anybody else. So, it's just gonna be a matter of a lot of sorting and I'll do it with Leanne and what we can. And, um, we're moving ahead, we're moving ahead and so we're ready to do that and I'll work with Larry to get some kind of an operating agreement, cause that's a big deal for them that we actually have. Something in writing that says, yes, you're gonna be able to maintain this as the building that, you know, we're paying for.
I, I think that's, that's easy.
Well, that's...
I mean, it's, we'll agree to it, so...
Yeah, it shouldn't be a big, huge thing, they have very little, you know, it just has to be an agreement in writing by the commissioners and, you know, yes, it's okay to do that. I'm also going to ask them if the property that you've allowed, the Sergeant Oyster thing to be on, if we can consider that as match, if the port has dedicated it to that, to the project we wanted you to. I'm really hoping they'll allow us to, to count that as, as match. It's really, really complicated today. It's gonna be a challenge, but I think we're gonna be okay.
Is, is there language, uh, Bonnie, that we could, uh, adopt pretty quickly about making sure that stays in thirteen years, at least thirteen years with the Historical Society?
Uh, yeah, I think I can get something from Nick because everybody has to do it. Any kind of a contract they have.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if there's not some boilerplate.
And that's with the contract too, he's got boilerplate, we need to stick in the contract. And so, I'll ask him on this agreement too, that I'm sure that they do because everybody does. And we had not, strangely, cleared the, met the oh five oh five regulation, which has, it's the Governor's Office review of any historic preservation stuff. And when the project began, the South Puget Sound Salmon Enhancement people were doing the restoration thing down there and they just kinda skipped the state and went right to Theller. So, they never went through that process, state never knew about this building. And we got it stopped at the one oh six process and they said, yes, that's what it actually is. But going forward, what Larry has done with the archaeological thing out here is gonna suit you guys well for the, for the ground. We still have to go through and get the approval from, even though we've been working with them for nine years, we have to get that right, so I'll take care of that. But we've been kind of sorting out which, which piece is which and I think it's gonna work out okay. Talked with Lisa today and she's right on top of it, so. We were the only one they couldn't write a scope of work for. Because there's still, you know, the way we changed it has changed our scope of work, so. And I, I think we're okay on that.
On the receipts that you are requiring, is it for everything that we've done?
Everything. Every bit of donated, I have to have an invoice and have to have it marked paid. And the canceled check for everybody else, uh, we still have to document bids and things like that. And they have to be in chronological order over the last six years. For every dollar and forty-five cents that we have spent, I have to get copies of every single one of them. I have to get a, um, an invoice from Bill Ray. I need to get an invoice from Mike Ross. I need to get an invoice from the guys that do the winnows. And Rex did give me an invoice already on his payday, so that was a big chunk. But yeah, it's, it's gonna be a real challenge.
Yeah, I've given you a few, but there was a lot that I didn't document, so I'll have to...
Yeah, and, and all of us, all of the volunteer work that was done, I told you, we have sheets on that that we're gonna have to go back and I'll recreate as much as I can, but then everybody has to sign it and, yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna be a major, major, major hundreds of dollars of work that are trying to get done, so. But I think we're on track, they're working with us, so we're all good with that.
So, the hundreds of hours of work, is that a match?
Nope. Nope, and anything that is not specifically construction, and I knew this, Jennifer told me this before, but all the meetings don't count unless the consulting was specifically for construction, doesn't count. Uh, I think the consultant that you did will, will write that off.
Yeah.
That can be a match. But yeah, everything that... Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of fun, but yeah, it's, it's, it's challenging. They've been very, very, they were very, very clear today on you can take this, but you cannot do this. And there were a lot of canals. And so, some of the stuff we've had and I have to sort all of that out and then put it together in a totally different format than what it is right now. So, Ina and I are working together to get all, everything that we've had on that side. I have to account for every penny that's come in. For the last six years and it's, it's gonna be a challenge, but I hope we're working together and we're gonna be able to get it done. Because I'm hoping to have a contract, she put us at the head of the pack because I told her we'd like to have the fall work done this fall. I don't know, Larry, is August, the end of August early enough to get a contract done with that? At the end, you think?
I'm sure we can figure it out.
Cause that's, that's what the years would be at.
What was, another question, what was, will you tell me what was the contract with Nicholas Van or what was his?
When we contract to have the work done, Larry's done, done the basic, got those going. When we actually contract with the person, Nick has to be involved to make sure that their language is included in this.
Yes, okay.
And so, they wanna be involved in that process to make sure everything is, meets the, the grant standards.
Yes, okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie, for all your work.
Love it.
So, your thousand hours isn't a match?
Grant stuff, no, it isn't a match.
Any other public comment, Lenny?
I don't wanna get this down.
It gotta be on the camera. You wore your best hat.
Oh, one quick thing. Ted Johnson and Scott Cooper, I find it so your strengths come from...
Thank you.
And Tino...
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? I have something for good to the order. If you have not visited the Burger claim, the, uh, the owners are outstanding, their, their food is good. And, um, I think it's great to have another choice in Belfair and another business and, you know, that was an empty building for quite a while, so I'm glad to see that. You have an op- If you have an opportunity to support that new business, please do.
Looking forward to it.
And I can be witness, he really was a safety days.
I wore both days.
Yes, I know you.
In uniform.
If I could add one thing, what I saw today on the news, Leann, Executive Director and Commissioner Scott, hotels are being tapped through their wifi, through electronic window openings. Did you see that?
No, I didn't.
I'm aware of it.
Yeah, so.
That's why we have the VPN and I put it on on your iPad.
Yeah, it was just, after the, the conference last week, it's just amazing to see what these folks can do to get into our computers and get into our phones and everything else.
I would say that all those tips that we've been giving, like on my junk mail, we get every one of those that you're supposed to.
Why?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the guy that did the cyber seminar there, Chris Carter from the Port of Vancouver, he has a mailing list with weekly tips and stuff to watch out for now, so I've signed us up.
Oh, good.
But, you know, I put the VPN on your stuff there a year and a half ago. But I can't force you to turn it off.
Doesn't it automatically turn on?
Uh, I don't know what.
Because I think it does.
It may, because there is a setting for automatic, but.
Yeah, because I've seen mine.
But it's NOR VPN.
Yeah.
But you'd never know. Say, can I see your iPad?
I'm just saying. But anytime you stay in a hotel, those are all secure.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't know, I saw it around.
It's a little sign. All right, if there's no other, good to the order, meeting adjourned. And that's for a commercial.